Okay, good. Okay, September 10th at 7:00 PM and the Emmitsburg Planning Commission is now in session. First thing is we'll have a pledge to leave, so everybody please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business is to review and approve the minutes from the August 26th meeting. Everybody should have got a copy of those in their packet. Are there any questions on the minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for oh. Okay. Okay, do we see if we have some public comment here? Brandy, want to make comments or do you have something on particular item you want to speak to? Okay, so that's why I ask if you want to wait for that, that's fine. Okay. So we have no old business now. The new business in front of us is the zoning ordinance for the text amendment. You want to come up and speak, just give us your name.
Just a point of order. Typically, we have staff review first and then the applicant would make comments.
Okay.
It's up to you.
Okay, I was just going to introduce that the applicant has proposed a set of modifications to Title 17 zoning ordinance of the town code. So there's been some changes on the memo. You're recommending either approval or denial of this, not approving the so just wanted to clarify that. And I can go through each changes or how would you like to?
If yes, go through the changes and I think everybody has a map because I thought there may be some question of what the zone we were talking about is. So if we see that's the orange basically section in the middle of town is what we're referring to. Yeah.
Basically, the purpose of these changes is to codify student housing in town. So the first change we have is we added the definition of bedroom to make sure that it that rental units or student housing, they meet the building, international building code as adopted by the county. Then we have made some changes to the definition of boarding house on the second page of the marked up copy. So we've made it so that no more than two guests excluding minor children accompanied by a parent or lawful guardian per bedroom is permitted. And the next change is oh, sorry, right. The applicant has proposed adding college or post-secondary school as part of the definitions in this section of the code. We've changed the definition of family to include resident household employees. Changed the boarding a little bit, it's servants. Then another change proposed by staff is deleting the definition of rooming house to, or you can make the following modifications as shown. The applicant has proposed that rooming house shall not be used as student housing. Both the applicant and staff have worked on the student housing definition. Staff has suggested taking out the definition of tourist home because it's not used in the code. And then some changes to 17.36.020 boarding houses that's been specified. And then parking requirements on page 10. That's unnumbered, okay. That's interesting. I don't know how that happened. Okay. I remember the other ones, so, okay. Microsoft Word letting me down. Okay, so we've established the parking requirements for, well, we changed the boarding house, lodging houses to boarding house and then the minimum off-street parking requirements for that and the last change. Oh, sorry, we've put student housing under permitted or under 17.36.040 D7. So that establishes the parking requirement. And under 17.36.090, we've added so that that the student housing meet the flash requirements and I think that's about it.
Now, with respect to just some of the recommended modifications, it was to just update sort of the language, if you will, the whole servant references a little bit outmoded and we looked through the code for terms that actually weren't defined but were used and so we got rid of those. And also tried to just clarify some of these requirements so, but Nigella did a fine job giving you an overview of what's what the applicant has proposed and so what you have in front of you is the applicant's draft and then the draft that was reviewed and modified by staff.
Any of the commissioners have any questions on this?
I do, but I'd like to hear any additional information because maybe my questions will be answered.
Okay, so any, before, is any, no other question? Okay.
Excuse me, could you turn on your mic?
There's a button that turns mics on. We're here because of an actual property in town that prompted our application for text amendment and I really want to talk about why student housing, why we chose where we want to put it and what brought this all about and and I'll take you back to the early 2000s, the property that's really prompted this proposed text amendment is 101 to 105 West Main Street. And I can show you pictures of how dilapidated it was back in the early 2000s and notice after notice after notice was sent to the former property owner. If you want to see the pictures, I can proffer them to the commission.
Yeah, I think that would help.
There are two sets and there's four copies.
Thank you.
Those are just some of the, the, the outside pictures that, that I was able to secure, but I also was able to find complaints. Complaints over and over and over again from the city files that talk about the, the property owner being cited as this building being unsafe, dangerous. It had a lot of, lot of problems with it. And so, and so this building really sat dilapidated in need of repair and the way the building was situated, it used to be three units. My client wanted to, to make three units, but for logistic reasons and because of the historic nature of the building, he could only make two. One of those units has seven bedrooms, the other has four, and therein lies the problem. Finding people that will rent a seven-bedroom house for normal families and how you can reconfigure an old building. So this building was purchased by my client in 2022 and was completely renovated, very high-end renovations. And it essentially is an adaptive reuse of an existing historic building to make it viable for the community. What happens with a lot of these older buildings and I've seen them in Brunswick, I've seen them in Middletown is that you have these buildings that have been sitting around for a long time and they just fall into disrepair and we're not trying to propose something that's inconsistent with the village zone. When you look at adaptive reuse of a building, particularly as you're looking at student housing, and I then did a deep dive into all the municipalities across the US that have adopted student housing regulations and zoning and it's a very hot topic. But what adaptive reuse of a building for student housing in this zone? Not only does it revitalize older buildings, it provides affordable housing for students. It stimulates the local economic growth. If you have people living downtown, they're going to participate in the businesses. It will also be sustainable development. You're not sprawling out from something that's already in existence. And it also preserves the historical character of the neighborhood. Now, when I talk about a lot of municipalities have, have done this, there's actually been a lot of zoning things written about this. I mean, the zoning practice, American Planning Association did a whole article as to why student housing is necessary. Because people have these fears, they have these fears that there's going to be students there and there's going to be parking and there's or partying and there's going to be a lot of things that you would associate college students to do. But if you carefully craft the zoning ordinance, you're not going to have the problems that most people automatically think when they think of students living in houses. And the thing that I really wanted to point out to this board already is that in your special exception, it's already a permitted use to have sororities and fraternities in the same village zone. So we're not really changing what's, what's allowed to be used, we're just reclassifying that it's not just sororities and fraternities, it's just in general, student housing. Then let's look at the practical aspect of this. Go to Mount St. Mary's website. They have a 70% on student, on-campus student housing rate for undergraduate students. When you go to their graduate section, it says, "The university is currently working to identify available spaces regarding housing graduate students." They don't really have the facilities to house a lot of graduate students. It's my understanding that yours are graduate students or regular students? Yeah, I mean, there's, there's been an issue with, with graduate students finding on-campus housing, so they have to go out of campus. Then you also look at what's going on in the real estate market right now. You have rentals that are going sky-high. Families can barely afford to rent prices at, at rental prices that are higher than most people's mortgage these days. So student housing provides a benefit where you can actually have viable housing in a zone that, that creates growth and economic stability that prevents buildings from being dilapidated, strengthens the local economy and also provides affordable housing for students to live in. Mount St. Mary's is two minutes down the road, it's, it's convenient. We're only talking about putting this use in the village zone. And when I talk about what's permitted in the village zone, uses already permitted there are multifamily dwellings and we're talking about that small orange area that's only, seems to be a very small zone within Emmitsburg. You have schools and community centers, you have retail establishments, you have laundromats permitted, you have medical centers, you have grocery stores, drugstores, laundromats, restaurants, you have offices, you have other kind of service, you know, accountants offices. These, this is an area where it's very busy already. It's like a downtown, albeit in a smaller scale. So what I'm urging this commission to look at is the fact that we're not really adding, creating a new use, considering the fact that sororities and fraternities are already allowed to be there. But we're creating a use for buildings in this particular area that would not otherwise be able to be used as regular apartments or regular housing. And with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Well, anybody else want to go first? Um, I guess my lead-off question is there doesn't seem to be anything in the current code for the village zone that would prohibit students from renting rooms in a home. There's nothing there that I can find that prohibits that. If that's the case, why are we amending the code if it's already permitted?
So actually, that, that would be a misreading of the code. Commissioner Turnquist, because you have definitions, excuse me, definitions of family and the, and the household unit and the student housing doesn't meet those criteria. And respectfully, the proposal that was submitted by Mr. Art and his counsel actually addresses a few things that I think are appropriate, including because parking's a hot issue, that one unit per bedroom, which is important and the fact that they don't have to act as a single household unit in order to rent a single-family home. Because students come and go, they don't necessarily act, you know, in lockstep with each other. They will share common rooms, but they wouldn't necessarily need the definition of a household unit. And so that's why this is being proposed. I mean, Ms. Peoples may have another rationale.
Let me add to that too. Commissioner, is that a lot of these local zoning laws, when it deals with students, go back to a really ugly Supreme Court case that basically defined what a family is because people really wanted to control who lived where and the court, it was a Supreme Court case actually called Beltar versus Barris, it's a 1974 case where they didn't want kids in an off-student housing living in this particular zone. So they decided that they were going to create this law that defines what a family is. And from the Supreme Court law, a lot of states and local governments, municipalities followed, sort of parroted what that, that family meant. And for the longest time, you couldn't have people that weren't related by blood living in the same house. So we're here to try and correct the, the leftovers from, that may exist in the code from that Supreme Court case. Because I think it's important that we clarify, that's why the, the definition of family, if you'll see in your mock-up, has been changed. Because a lot of municipalities, and I can, I can talk to some of them, St. Paul, Minnesota, New Mexico, College Station, Texas, they've all done these revisory municipal statutes to try to combat what that awful Supreme Court precedent did and to clarify the code to allow districts to have these kinds of housing set up.
Right. I mean, I understand the definition of family, which probably would, which would probably be related to home occupation. But in the rooming house definition, as it stands, there's nothing that prohibits students.
Rooming houses are more transient, students have a lease, so they actually have a, they actually have a vested tenancy versus in a rooming house, it's, it's, it's different. They're, they're not treated as an actual tenancy with rights in the property. If that makes
Leslie, can I ask a question on that side, just to clarify it? So with the tenant, you get the tenancy sets, the eviction rules come in. If you're a boarding house, you don't have the tenant, the eviction rules don't apply. Would that be a correct statement?
To a certain extent, yes, because as, as Ms. Peoples indicated, a boarding house is a short, short-term, short-term facility and people come and go and one of the reasons, I mean, you know, pick one, eliminate boarding house or eliminate rooming house, but you don't need both terms.
Right, yeah.
And so this also provides additional protections for the town in the village zone to preserve your sought-after parking spots, right, which is, which is clearly, which is clearly an issue. So what you do with a boarding house is that they come in, they typically, they pay upfront for the services and then when that is over, then out they go. And so to that extent, you're right, the tenancy rules and the you know, eviction proceedings would not apply in that context.
And you have a little bit more control over tenants by, you know, putting provisions and leases that require them to adhere to codes that required them, should it, should a landlord want a parking placard to identify whose parking where? I mean, there, there are mechanisms by which an actual tenancy helps the town.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we drew that line between tenancy and non-tendency where those roles kick in and everything.
Right, you're not going to have an eviction proceeding over somebody at a, at a bed and, at a bed and breakfast or a boarding house in this case. We eliminated, I think bed and breakfast because, or in because the terms aren't defined and so it's like, well, that, that was problematic. And then one point of clarification just for the commission is that there, we have sort of two proposals, one, that it would be accepted as of right, which is what I believe the applicant's preferred approach is. And then the second option is as a special exception, which of course would require a hearing before the Board of Appeals, but the test for a special exception is essentially that it can't be any more burdensome in the particular location than it would be anywhere else within the zone. So it's a pretty high bar to, to reject it. But that we provided sort of a option.
Better than changing the zoning.
Yeah. So.
Okay.
Okay, um, so I'll just say one final time and not to kind of be, be a dead horse, but the rooming house definition does not preclude students. That's number one. Number two, to add the def, to add the definition of student housing puts more requirements on homeowners because the quarters have to be designed specifically for students. So I don't know what those design standards are. So to me, students are already allowed on Main Street. Second, we're making it harder for homeowners if we're making student housing be specifically designed with certain standards. The, the code already requires one parking space per bedroom, so that's not changing. Another question is, does metered parking on the street count as parking?
No.
Okay, so is parking, is there one, if it's seven bedrooms and five bedrooms, are there 12 parking spots available?
There are 12 off-street parking spots available.
Okay, that aren't metered.
That are not metered.
Okay, perfect. And then, um, let's see, we currently have students on Main Street, right, living on Main Street?
Yes, we do.
So they're, they're already there.
Well, that's not in a village zone.
That's, that's a subject for another day. So they're already there. I don't think they're currently prohibited by code and I'll throw one more thing out there. Code 17.36.010 provisions governing the village zone. Their purpose of the village zone is, number one, to stabilize and improve property values. If you bring in a lot of students, I'm not suggesting this will happen. But I think people are going to have many varying opinions about, you know, how that's going to be seen on Main Street with the problems we've had with other students. My final question, sorry, one more. With FEMA, do they have a university or secondary school at the National Fire Academy? Are they considered part of this definition, college or post-secondary school? Would that include?
If FEMA did have such a program, yes, it would be considered that. I don't believe that it does, but they do a lot of things that I don't know about, so.
And then if we're going to consider it for the village zone, I'm not sure how that impacts the other zones. I don't know if it's currently allowed there or not.
It's, it's not permitted in other zones.
So, I knew you'd asked the other thing, so here's all the definitions for it.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's not permitted in other zones and we are proposing the deletion of the rooming house definition, staff is.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry, I was going to say, this, this isn't something that we just thought up or if we thought it was perfectly okay to, to do without appearing before you. I mean, we, behind-the-scenes council have been and talks about this issue for months. And, you know, I'm not trying to waste your time, Commissioner, but the only thing that we could arrive at to rectify the, the ambiguities in the code was to put something together that was a little bit more explicit as to what was and what wasn't allowed. And that's why we're here. So I, I, I understand. I like, I'm picking up what you're, what you're saying and I understand where you're coming from and I, I want you to assure you that I don't just file these things to file these things. So I, I just given you some clarity and context and I mean, we've been here, we've been talking for months.
I think since last fall.
Yeah.
This, I mean, your code to a large extent is complaint-driven, just so you're aware.
Everywhere.
So, you know, and, and so this also gives the town an avenue to police situations as well as to protect the property values that you've referred to, Commissioner Turnquist, and to ensure that you know, you don't have trash overfills and, and things like that and you know, your parking is cluttered up. So to, I would say to a great extent, this particular proposed text amendment puts the town in a better place in terms of regulation. And I would also suggest that to people that are, you know, renting rooms, they're probably not doing it correctly.
Just today, I went on apartments.com and found two separate listings for places outside of this zone that are offering student housing. So it's happening. We're just trying to do the right thing.
Yeah. Although I do think that at least one of those is outside the town limits.
Still, I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's permitted even in Frederick County zoning, yeah.
Right.
I mean, this, this, it's a problem. This, this is, this concept has, has caused a flurry of municipalities having to look at, how do we regulate this? How do we appease public perceptions that students are noisy and bring trouble? Because they do, but you can also have, you also have students that, that won't either. And so to, to be able to fulfill a need and you've got a college right down the street to be able to fill, fulfill a need and then have the town to, to set the parameters and set the playing rules helps the town, but it also gives the property owners what they want as well. It's, it's, it's an idea to work collaboratively versus against each other.
So for staff end, has anybody reached out to the Student Affairs Office at the college to get their opinion?
The answer to that would be no, but I can tell you that they're constantly talking about it and they've been an active participant in the comp plan discussions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I got a question.
Sure.
Is it feasible financially? I mean, you're gonna, you won't have a problem down the road where you have to throw up your hands because you're not surviving financially.
Yeah, let me.
This is my client.
I'm a, I'm an accountant by trade, so.
Yeah, I know who you are. Yeah, yeah, you don't recognize me, I got old.
I don't recognize you.
I'm David's son.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm, I'm, I'm from Emmitsburg, I graduated from Mount St. Mary's. I grew up here, my family's in the odd house. So I, you know, I bought that building because I liked the building, right? And I put a ton of money in it, right? Just invest in it. Didn't take a single shortcut. The answer to your question is no, there won't be a, there won't be a problem as far as the maintain and these type of the, the building's estate or the, where the state is in right now, we will keep it current. Like my attorney had said, the building was, you know, pretty much falling down, the inside was falling apart. You know, I went in there, I mean, the doors on the front are like $8,000 apiece. I made that place in case I were going to live there, right? I could live there. I pointed up all the brick on the inside, all the fireplaces. I kept some of the historical stuff on the inside. Got a lot of compliments about, so I didn't take one shortcut at all for the building, even the patio out back, I redid all the stuff in the current. So, you know, I, I put my name on that building, right? So I would say that if they did anything for the property values around it, it would up because the, the praise will of the building, one of the praise that currently now, right? I have bought other buildings in town. I tend to invest more money in town as I did in Thoroughmud. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not here to take any shortcuts or anything. I, I, my family's been here for a long time. So we're just kind of going about this the current way. We've been talking to Leslie for a while. I didn't realize I was doing anything wrong, to be honest. I didn't know that. I thought I went about it the right way and I was like, oh, what's going on? You know, I'm, I'm, I travel around a lot working, so I didn't, I didn't, didn't realize what we were doing was incorrect. So that's why we're here today.
I appreciate you asking the questions. Most would not.
Yeah, and again, I apologize for that part and I was a little confused about the situation. But, uh, you know, I want to make sure that we, we are doing it properly.
Is it the units with the gray siding? Is it the units with the gray siding?
With the, your ones are dark siding, yeah, and then the other.
Siding.
Yeah, that's.
Next to the firehouse?
Correct.
Oh, those are beautiful with the wood doors.
Yeah, we made it by hand on our plant.
Yeah, those are beautiful, yeah.
Yeah.
We talk about those when we're talking about facade improvements.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, we, we put a lot of time and effort in. It took me two months to decide on that color, to be honest with you. Right, so.
So that's considered in the historical district then?
Well, it's historic, it's not controlled. Historic, you know, you, you have national historic rules and you have Frederick County historic rules. That building is not listed on the registry that has to be controlled by that.
Correct, yeah. But we tried to maintain exactly what it was. We kept the one inside door and just re- uh, polished it, right? And some of the other items, we kept all the brick, you know, we tried to do a really good job of maintaining all the fireplaces and whatnot in there, all the beams.
I guess the other thing I have is, is commenting, you're saying seven bedrooms and one and five in the other?
Uh, it was, yeah, so originally the, the, so if you go back to, I think the house was built like seventeen forty-seven, a, a lot of uh, uh, historical people came and talking about it. So originally it was one eleven-bedroom house. And then somewhere along the line it became one oh one, one oh three, and one oh five, right? So then, and, and that's how I purchased it. And then I came to the town and brought blueprints, my architects, and said, hey, you know, what's everybody's opinion about this? What, how should we go about it, right? So they said it'd probably be easier to make it, uh, two separate units, not the same three. So at that time, whoever the town planners were, whoever's involved in it, said, yeah, we'd like to see that. So that's okay. So then we went back to the drawing board, we changed it, brought it back and that's what we did. We went through every single county inspection that was needed, updated what they wanted updated, um, and, um, that's how we ended up kind of where we're at. Uh, for what I was using it for, I didn't realize I was doing anything that was against what you allowed. So I just, I learned that after, when I got a complaint or, or, you know, what Leslie was saying. So it wasn't anything done purposely, I didn't. Be, and, and look, I, I grew up here, right? So I know what goes on in the rest of town, right? And my family owns a lot of apartments in town.
Bobby would hunt you down.
Huh?
Bobby would hunt you.
My uncle Bobby would hunt me down. Listen, I, I gave, you know, I gave him the door hardware that they found in the attic so he could make a little, little doorknob. But, but long story short is, um, so I, I really didn't know I was doing anything wrong, to, to be honest with you. So we're here today because I wanna make it right. I spent a lot of money, you know, attorneys, you know, doing paperwork and whatever it would take, so that's, that's kind of where I stand at.
Okay, the other thing is, now you, you're saying, I know there's college students for all over the world. What kind of control you think we'll have? I mean, you're talking about contacting the mount. Maybe you can coordinate somehow with the new president that, that, that you're gonna have some kind of control over rowdiness.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, you're gonna have people complain about that more than anything else quickly.
Because he's got good attorneys, he's got good leases that have rules and regulations in them that can control what people do. And if people are unruly, you can evict them for. Exactly. I mean, again, it's a collaborative effort with the town. And I'm, I'm sure that, uh, Mr. Out screens his tenants as well, because if he's putting that much money into a property, you just don't want some rowdy students going into a place and then destroying it.
Yeah, it's pretty obvious on Main Street.
Yeah, we, we have a number of town ordinances to address that and currently the Board of Commissioners and staff does work with the college, you know, if something's getting out there. There's a constant two-way communication that goes back and forth of every day. And I will grant you, somebody sees a beer bottle on the street, there's gonna be complaints. I get calls on it very early. But it's the nature of the beast. It's not college students are evil.
Well, and sometimes it's not college students.
Right, but I, you know, there's that, that perception that, that, you know, that it's, oh, we have problems with the college students. I don't want people focused on that, you know, it's just.
And, and you also do have a panoply of laws that the town can enforce as well with respect to, you know, nuisances and violations of, you know, ordinances and things like that.
Maybe you can coordinate that with the deputy sheriffs, make them aware that you've got people in there and they're college students. That will help with communication.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah. Hopefully that we don't have any.
And we're looking to address some of that with our new comprehensive plan that'll come into effect. We have some of that we want. Well, you know, vacancy rates, what do we have that we're looking for in that cooperation back and forth? So that'll also, so you, you know, I don't wanna put the onus on a landlord. You know, and have the impression that, oh, he's gotta deal with the police personally, he's gotta deal with the mail personally. That's not our intention. You know, it's like we, we do have regulations, we do as a town have two-way communications with that. Plus, we're looking to add even more language in the next comprehensive plan if it goes through to address some of the things where we have renters or long-term stays here and there.
Remember, I've only been on the board a couple of months, I'm learning a lot.
I agree, that's why I'm trying to step in and I'm the memory here. So, any other questions?
I was gonna play devil's advocate, now I'm thinking about it. Uh, frankly, I think things are the biggest piece of schlock I've ever read. I have spent the last week meeting with Mounties and with some of the landlords. And based on what I'm reading, right now you're designing property that meets these qualifications. In this town, period. You're for, make, telling these landlords, they gotta put in dumpsters, they gotta add parking places maybe. There is a brand-new vacancy just down the street from you that I only found because it was on the mound side. She's not ready to rent things, but she's only got two parking places in that thing. She's got six bedrooms. Property's totally, slowly fenced in. But you'd have to make modifications, most of the, the, the ones down by, by Emmett Gardens, the same thing. You, they're not gonna put a dumpster there, they can't get, trash truck can't get in those driveways and can't even drivers wanting to support the weight of the trash truck in most cases. You put dumpsters in there, we've been collecting, the town's collecting them up, collecting the trash there all these years with no issues to speak of. And none of this is gonna address the issues the town has had with students, issues of where the, the, the conduct issues of. This doesn't affect that.
It's agreed, this will have no impact that, but people that are currently violating town ordinances, we're not here tonight to discuss that. And I agree with you, it's a number, but that's another discussion to have.
That's why I'm saying, my, my, my issue was, was ba- basically was what it's gonna, what these landlords are gonna put into their units to comply with this thing.
That, that's the same as they have to apply now, so.
I, I do wanna make one point of clarification. You don't have to have a dumpster.
It's. That's what it says.
No.
Now, it's a trash can.
Not.
It's a metal trash can in the back.
Metal container, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm not here to stir up anything else. The reason I'm here is because, you know, I met with Leslie in the, in the past twelve months. And, you know, they wanted me to make some changes and we were trying to come up with a solution. I wouldn't even come bother you guys.
I agree with it, and that's why I said, I don't wanna get into a debate here tonight what other landlords are doing or how they treat it or other violations.
Sure.
In the town. We're here just to address, you know, the changes that you have recommended and that are here before us tonight.
Right, that's what I was doing, that's what I'm trying to do. I was just.
Okay.
Some of landlords, you know, adding parking places and so forth.
Oh, I agree.
That's, you know, that's outlay that they, it's that budget.
Right, you, you know how I feel about parking, so.
And I'll, and I'll just add, yeah, I didn't invent, wh- when I looked at making the modifications to the code, I went and I read St. Paul, Minnesota's municipal code. I read Pennsylvania City of Bethlehem's municipal code. I, I read College City, Texas. And I was seeing uniform themes, so I was trying to keep Emmitsburg consistent with what numerous municipalities have done. Um, I'm town council for Middletown. We don't have this ordinance, but if it comes up, you know, I'll be better prepared how to, how to do it. So I, I wasn't trying to slight anybody, I was just trying to keep consistent with what most people who have undergone.
I'm not saying it was a slight or anything, I'm just saying that some of the landlords are saying, you know, it's, you know, it's more in my pocket, do I need to raise the rents? Do I need to do this or that? And.
That was not my intention.
Right, it, it, that, what, what I wanna get into the discussion that we have here are the recommendations that staff has made. Are, in reviewing any of these recommendations, what's in red or black? Are there questions for staff? Or for our property owners that are requesting this?
Did you go to any, another town this size to compare it or? Cause all those you, you checked were a lot bigger, right?
I must have read, they're down even, like, when you look at Chapel Hill, North Carolina, which is much bigger, um, they've made things work. I must have read probably twenty or twenty-five different municipal codes just through searching online and seeing what, what people have done. And then Maryland Municipal Lawyers League, I, I went to them for guidance as to who, who's done this most recently. So this is not something I pulled out of my hat. Um, but I tried to find what the commonality and the common themes were in, in how, how municipalities were dealing with this. And some of them I thought were literally even weirder. They just did zoning overlays versus actually putting it in different districts. So I, I went with what was prevalent, what, what the laws have upheld and what was fair to give the town the confidence that you can actually coexist in this kind of environment and have.
You can go ahead.
You, you, you can cooperate with landlords and actually have a successful relationship where it benefits the town and it benefits the landlords. And honestly, I just, I looked for themes, I can't recall, but I must have looked at twenty-five different municipal codes. And, and, and their histories and find out how they got to where they were, so.
You're making this based on their, their content?
A lot of it, yeah. I mean, I added some words of my own definitions, but I, I did look at common themes.
Okay, so i- in the language that we have in front of us, are there questions? I don't wanna, we're not getting in yes or no votes, I just wanna know right now, are there questions in specific language? Or concerns about specific languages it says in there?
We're not making it too complicated, are we?
No, I, I don't think so, but I wanna make sure staff has made a number of recommendations and I wanna make sure they're given due consideration or if people have concerns about any of that language, if we address that now.
I, I guess I have a follow-up question. Um, you know, the, the definition student housing, it says it, it has to be quarters, living quarters designed for students. So if, let's say I have a house on Main Street, can I rent it out to students? Or do I have to get the town's approval to say, yes, I haven't, do I have to get a permit from the town? Or if, if, as long as I'm meeting these guidelines, I can rent my house to students? Without the town coming out to see that it's designed for students, number one, that there's enough parking spaces, number two. And that we haven't, and that we've complied with the code, number three.
That would depend on whether you go with the special exception version or a permitted use version.
A permitted use version, student housing.
Yeah, if it's in the permitted, if it's considered a permitted use in the VZ zone and you meet the criteria.
You just do it.
You would just do it and it would
just be.
Not create a violation as long as you meet the criteria.
And then living quarters designed for students where it talks about cooking facilities, is that a kitchen? Or is a refrigerator and a microwave sufficient?
Um, so one thing I did wanna, you do need to do a change of use um, zoning certificate if you went from single-family to, to student, yeah. Sorry about that.
Change of use, what was the rest?
What's your terminal?
Zoning?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Change of use zoning certificate? If you're going from single-family to student housing or boarding or rooming.
Right, or, or anything really. I mean, that's a standard requirement.
Come in, if you're switching from a single-family to an Airbnb, I have to get those certificates.
To answer your other question about the kitchen.
Yes.
This is still a leasable, like, it has to be habitable under Maryland law. You can't lease an apartment and call it an apartment if it's not, you don't have certain things like a kitchen, so.
But you're renting a room, so is.
Well, there's a common, like, the rooms all feed to a common area, common kitchen or living room or whatever, but there's still a common area like a normal house, so to speak.
Usable by everybody, right?
Yes.
So, um, mini fridge and a microwave is not going to be approved for, it's not considered designed for students. Like, we're talking about the living quarters must be designed for students, so those are special provisions for students. I, I just wanna be clear.
Right, and we're not talking about your particular case, so I, I don't wanna.
I'm talking about the, the, the wording in the code.
So the proposed wording is something that you could certainly, I mean, because this is going, depending upon what happens here, you'll either make a recommendation for approval or you won't support it, and then it goes to the mayor and Board of Commissioners for action. But your point's well taken.
Yes.
That, because it's not, I mean, it's not like students need some special, you know, for a requirement, right? I mean, I think that it was, the point is, is that it has to meet housing code criteria. And if that's something that would be a better way to define it, you know, as, you know, meeting the definitions for a habitable dwelling as defined under the, you know, the building code that's been adopted by Frederick County, we could do that. I mean, that's a, that's a fine suggestion because honestly, I didn't even think about design for as being more restrictive, but your point's well taken.
And I think that's an excellent question too, because you had me thinking of, okay, you're right. Um, so I, in terms of what we're requesting, I, I, I'd be open to modifying that, that definition so that it's clear as to what people are renting.
And then, like, for instance, the tattoo shop or the outhouse. Now, I've not been in the upstairs of those buildings, but let's say you walk upstairs in the outhouse and let's say there's four bedrooms. There's no kitchen, but there's four bedrooms and a bathroom, a shared bathroom. They wouldn't fit into this policy for student housing. It wouldn't fit, it wouldn't be allowed. So we're picking up one market but excluding another for students. Well, because we've said student house, students can't stay in a rooming house, and we've said students can't stay, stay in a boarding house. It has to be in a space that's designed for students.
Well, rooming houses have those amenities. I mean, you're not, they, they may not necessarily be given access to a kitchen, but they're gonna have, because they're for short term, it's not something that would be required.
Right, but so if it's above the outhouse and there's four bedrooms and a shared bathroom, it would not a kitchen facility, they couldn't rent out those bedrooms to students.
That is correct.
And I don't think under Frederick Code, they could rent them even to, is, to people as apartments today under Frederick Code, would that be correct?
They wouldn't qualify as.
Right, and so it wouldn't be the students or anyone, you couldn't rent that under Frederick Code currently, if that, if that were the, in your definition and there wasn't like, say, a kitchen unit in there that they could have access to. Uh, my understanding is under Frederick Code, that cannot be rented.
What qualifies as a kitchen? How about a mini fridge and a microwave in each bedroom? Does that qualify under Frederick Code?
I would defer to Leslie on the Frederick Code. I think it's.
I, I haven't looked at that, but I don't think it would.
Yeah, I, I.
But I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, to be frank.
Yeah.
I mean, that sounds like a dorm room.
Yeah.
You know, when you, when you have the ability to go and eat in the, you know, in.
An essential place that everybody needs to eat.
Right.
When you're saying Frederick, you're talking about Frederick County or Frederick City?
Frederick County.
Okay.
Yeah, but it, if, if you have a, just a room and a shared bathroom, that would not, you couldn't rent that as an apartment.
Right.
It's not a living unit.
Right. That's a different.
Yeah, that, that's what I was speaking of. If you have, you know, four rooms above the bat- outhouse, could you rent each of those bedrooms? And, uh, according to the changes in the code, you would not be permitted to do that. You wouldn't be able to rent those rooms to students.
That is correct.
Any other questions? Okay, so now I'm gonna get picky with the language here and it's just picky with the language. It's Sony that does a lot with colleges. When we mentioned down there, I guess on page two on the bottom and you're black, I prefer that we strike fraternity and sorority because colleges are trying to do away with those.
Yeah, they, they have a bad name for themselves.
Because we're saying, hey, this is what defines a college, it's all these things, and I don't wanna get trapped. If somebody says, oh, they don't have that, I'd rather not have it there. That's not crucial to what defines a college.
But you could do, uh, you know, I haven't.
Instead of a poll list saying this is everything, or if we said it may contain.
Well, you could pro- possibly do a full stop after public or private.
Right. It's just as it's written, it's, it's like, it's a checklist of what defines it. It's just as it's written, it's like, it's a checklist of what defines it.
I would rather over include and have you strike it than under include and and forget something.
Well, my concern is if we overstrike it, you know, like that, and I'm, I, what I don't want is saying, if you don't have all of these things. You're not a college.
Right, I see, I see what you're driving at. I mean, and if, and if one takes that. View, not every college has a chapel. I mean, there's a lot of state institutions that don't.
Right. Yeah, so that's my concern. I don't want that definition, you have to have all these to be a college.
Right, I'm, yeah, or if you wanted to put a full stop after offering courses in general, technical or religious education, period.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I'm 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 fine with that. Like I said, I. Giving the 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 commissioners as much deference to to strike if something that they don't like is possible versus. Forgetting to add something.
I just want to leave it more open as possible. I don't want to tie it down once. We get to start saying a college has to have A, B, C, and D. It's, I don't want to go down that road.
Trying to be less technical, huh?
Right, I want them there to teach. And that's their primary concern. I don't want them saying, oh, they have to have a chapel. They have to allow fraternities and sororities and it's, then we're gonna get in, is it on campus or off campus and. They would never allow my fraternity on campus. So anybody else have a comment on what I'm recommending there or concerns about doing that?
So so would you put the full stop after education or public or or at or private at the first clause?
Put it after public or private offering. Yeah, just a.
Just period?
Yeah.
Private period.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else on that page?
Okay, I just want to see what everybody's, because I noticed we changed on the first for boarding house from. Five to eight guests, just trying to. What was the logic behind that, the change?
The logic behind that change was to try to merge, I mean, and the number is a little bit high, but what we were trying to do is merge. The definition of boarding house and rooming house. Frankly, they're both rather outdated terms.
Okay.
But that was the whole point. I think rooming house. Rooming house. Seven, page. Says, but not exceeding nine guests and boarding house was five, so we just sort of. Frankly, we're somewhat arbitrary.
And let me say something.
Sure.
I think, I think that's kinda, that's kinda how we got here, right? I I just, yeah, I mean, I just wanted to kind of, that's, that's what we meant months ago. Right, that's what brought this whole thing to the surface, right, to, while we, you know, not to tie you guys' time up too much tonight, but. That's how we got in this discussion and, you know, got into this literature here, correct?
Well, and I mean, and what we could do if you wanted to is we could say, you know. Which for compensation for short-term lodging or something like that. If you wanted to further refine the definition of boarding house.
Yeah, I'd get that because we, I'd prefer the short terms. We had the same discussion of when we were talking about a hostel in town. Of the length of stay.
Right, so what do you want to define that or? For short term.
Right.
Well, but but does it really need to be short term? I mean, housing, many people can't find housing. So if you can find affordable, an affordable boarding house for, let's say, a mom and a child. But they can only stay there for six months.
Well, so the point would be that the increments would be short term. So for example, if you did. You know, one week increments because it's not under a lease.
Right.
Right, so I mean, if you think it's yielding the lily, we don't have to add it.
So I I hope that the example I want to give is go back to when we were talking about hostel. We made it, what they were talking about is renew the agreement once a month. And that way, that was what they were concerned short term for the hostel when we were talking about having the hostel in town. But they could continually renew it, and his object was to have students there and just continually renew. But it cuts out having that residency requirement.
Well, and it also cuts out some of the parking criteria, which you do want, because each student's gonna have his own car if they're living off campus.
Right.
It's up to, I mean.
I I mean.
It's the pleasure of the.
What does, get the opinions. I don't want to just be Kevin saying this.
Rooming houses and stuff have always been a hassle in this town. I I have lived in, uh, Mark and Catherine, some Mark and Catherine's properties. And basically, they already find us women houses, aren't they? I mean, across the street here, what's that? Where I used to live.
Yeah, it's, those are technically apartments.
No, they're not.
Well, tell her, Ren.
No, not not where I am. I'm talking about Mark and Catherine's property across from the outhouse, across from the carriage house.
Across from the carriage house.
Two oh five Seaton.
Yeah, I'm not.
Where I lived my first moving down.
I'd have to look into.
Their their individual rooms.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, it's it's a duplex and it's.
Right.
She's made him in, she divided him into. When I was there, my bedroom was the old living room.
Uh, I I've seen it happen and I don't know if that's up the code right now. I don't have enough knowledge to.
Well, that's that's what I think.
You're saying that is breaking the rules?
Well, if we're saying, if he's saying that people are renting rooms there. As an apartment and it doesn't have, you know, certain.
No, it that that strictly, it's a, it's a duplex house.
Right.
That the landlord is renting the rooms out individually.
Right.
What, on a time basis or?
No, I was, I was there two years.
Rent the entire duplex to one.
No, no.
Each room individually.
Each room individually, right.
That's great.
So is that a boarding house or a rooming house?
It would depend on the length of stay of the agreement.
Yeah, so maybe we shouldn't take rooming house out of the code. If they're.
That was the. Two years is where I got to where I am now.
Yeah, there's the. And Leslie, please correct me if I'm wrong, the difference between a rental and a boarding. Houses, the length of stay for the agreement that the the tenant has agreed to stay.
The difference is how we've defined it.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, if you don't want to say short term, you don't have to say short term, but the idea here is that. I mean, look, you want to make sure that anybody renting out rooms or. Houses for profit, or frankly, even living in them, that these homes are habitable and that they're not fire traps. And one of the ways to do this is to. Have your code written in such a way that these things, when they're, you know, when they're rented, or if you have a change of use, that they. That they comply with the Frederick County, you know, building code. So. I.
It's a fine line. I think, you know, you guys have heard me talk last night. The the state of our housing units in here, I think he's, if he's all heard me talk last night, is pretty big thing to me.
There were four, there were four of us in there and there was a kitchen on each floor. Kitchen and bathroom.
Right, and it may.
Well, that's an apartment. What you're describing is an apartment.
No, it's, well, it wasn't, but technically, I don't think it was.
It it's a duplex that they're renting out incorrectly.
Rent it out incorrectly. I mean, they're not rent the whole, they're not surrendering the whole, the whole house by itself. They're renting the rooms out of it.
Right, which you, and and I'll give you an example, because I know West Virginia Law School. Will tell you, they rent out townhouses and duplex, the school does, and then they rent them out the rooms to individual law students. And, right, so that's probably not what they're doing, but that's. Kind of the.
You're saying the college was doing itself?
Well, no, that in here, this is not happening. I can. Completely tell you the college is not buying any rooms or buildings off campus for students. That's, it's just to to answer your question about rooms and a. You know, when you have a duplex, that would be the correct. What you're saying.
Yeah, dwelling.
Right, but I don't, that's not before us right now. So I don't.
Because next door, next door can be, what, the what were Mounties in the house?
Right, so, well, no, I I don't disagree with that, but it it's one bite at the apple at a time. We're not gonna solve everything here tonight.
Right, and that's not why our applicant is here. However, having said that, if if the commission thinks that you'd like to retain both definitions, then I would suggest. Reverting back to boarding house as it was defined, because it is a dwelling, so it has to be a dwelling.
Right.
Okay, and dwelling is defined, so boarding house, we would just step the, strike through on the five and strike. All of it except for the last sentence, a boarding house shall not be used as student housing.
Okay, does anybody?
If that's what your.
I like that. Does anybody else object to that? Want it changed or have concerns?
No, I'm I'm agreeing, that's fine.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you read what it would say?
So if if we didn't monkey around with it, it would be boarding house means a dwelling in which for compensation, lodging. Or meals are furnished to not more than five guests. A boarding house shall not be deemed a home occupation. And then I'm suggesting that we add, a boarding house shall not be used as student housing. That that, that one modification would stay if you're inclined to keep two definitions.
So basically, we're just adding the the student housing clause to the way the old way was worded.
With the exception of the student housing, right, that's that, then it would remain as it was. And keeping in mind, this is your recommendation to the, to the board of commissioners, because. This would be something that they consider and.
Right.
Adopt or not adopt.
Right.
Did you say providing meals too or something?
Yeah, so boarding house means lodging or. Well, we added lodging and meals, because lodging or meals sounded then like you were gonna have just a restaurant for five people. It didn't make much sense, so. You know, so. This is for your consideration, so you tell us what you, you know, what you would like.
I I'd like, um, boarding house means a dwelling in which for compensation, lodging. Or meals are furnished, period. And not limited to five or eight guests, because the next sentence says, no more than two guests per bedroom. So if you have ten bedrooms, then you can have twenty people. If you have three bedrooms, you can have six people. So the number of guests per bedroom, that limitation defines. The number of people in the boarding house.
And then eliminate the rooming house definition? I mean, rooming house really did say, it also has to be a dwelling. I mean, the question is whether or not you want. Twenty people in a single family home.
To me, a boarding house is almost like a bed and breakfast. You can provide rooms or rooms and meals.
Yeah, so I would, I mean, I would say or lodging and meals.
Right.
A a rooming house to me is different in the sense that you're renting a room, there's a shared kitchen, it's, um. There's common areas, which is different than like a bed and breakfast, so I, I think it's different.
But they are, I agree. That that they are two different things, you know, and it's about that communal kitchen or area that the one would not have.
So again, the guests, the number of guests allowed should be tied to the number of.
Number of bedrooms. Okay, so it'd be. Full stop after furnished and then the next sentence would stay. Actually, the remainder of the changes would stay. We would just strike it out after.
You strike that from furnished.
Furnished, period. Okay.
Yeah, so you're going, but you know, from after furnished through guests and just pick, striking all that and going back up on no more.
Okay.
Any other changes?
Technical enough.
On page eleven, under special exceptions, do we want to take out the fraternities and sororities because?
I don't even know if you have any.
Yeah, do we want to just get rid of that?
Do you want to just?
Yeah, I. I I'd rather get rid of it before there was FEMA and the college was there, they did have a sorority. So I just thought, all of a sudden, you know, Fairleigh Farm becomes a new college.
You could be a trainee right on Main Street.
Uh, you know, that's the fraternity and sorority thing, colleges are really not liking these days.
Sure, okay, so we'll strike that. Where are we? Page eleven, you said?
Yeah, the very last page, number A.
And so we're just striking out fraternities and sororities.
And and you're okay with us striking tourist home, because that was like, where did that come from? When we were looking at this.
Well, okay, so. As a property owner, tourist homes, I generally think of people that are doing Airbnb type of deals. Where they're just, they may live there some of the time, but they're renting it out, it's a seasonal.
That might be a problem for another day.
I disagree. I don't disagree with you on that.
I mean, if you want, the problem is tourist home is not used anywhere else in your code. I mean, I was like, well, what are we talking about?
For for tonight, I would be more, I want fraternities and sororities. Taken out as a special exception.
Okay.
Just strike that section.
Got it. All right, so. Where is this?
And just a a technical question on where we're going right now. I know that it says one metal trash can has to be provided. Are we sticking to metal trash can as a town or are we going with the green bins?
Uh, you know, I don't have a position on this, do you?
I just didn't know what the town's thing, I know it's.
We can just say a one single.
Container.
Container.
Okay, that's fine.
So we're keeping tourist home for now?
Yeah, okay, don't want to go down that rabbit hole.
Okay, we'll have to, all right, so then I would suggest that on page nine, since rooming houses. Got, is is going to stay that it say boarding houses and rooming houses. Because lodging and bed and breakfast ends is not a defined term under your code.
Okay, so.
So we would say boarding houses.
We would need the same since we've not, you know, as we are basically defining one as kind of a bed and breakfast.
Yeah, so.
Leave that language in there.
Well, I would say and rooming houses, because lodging and bed and breakfast are not defined.
Correct, right.
So that would cover the water front, okay.
Creating a new definition.
All right. Next, we've got eleven. And we're just saying a single. Large container.
Right, I don't want to get into, it's gotta be metal, it's gotta be plastic.
Whatever it is.
Make it easy.
You gonna have a problem with the garbage collection guy?
No, they have to collect either one. It's just as a general, as a town, we can say, we want.
I just wondered.
Preference, but we don't, where it's the city of Frederick actually chips their containers, so they know where they're at. Yeah, so when they give you those when you buy in.
Does say, design and install it in accordance with code.
Right.
We may need to see what the code says.
Yeah. Now, it's in there, I've written one line that says of metal container, and that's why I'm like, no, gotta go away.
We're actually having this problem in other municipalities, realizing that codes have been around and like, things don't match up and words don't match up. So we've actually tasked a commission to go through and try and fix these kinds of things. It's not just you guys, it's happening everywhere, because it's just people don't. So it's a good, good start.
I have the whole book here. I don't want to pin people down if I can leave it open and everything, because that creates problems down the road. You know, with needless minutia.
Correct. Correct.
And I don't want to discourage business.
Strike that. We're having a small sidebar about thirteen point sixteen point oh two zero oh.
And we're finding there's things like.
Yeah, what the code is there.
Yeah. It allows the option for a dumpster, but it does not mandate it.
Right.
But what isn't good is that you have this bags option, because that's when people get very grumpy when.
Yeah, I, I don't want just a bag, if we have the option to get rid, I, it should be in some type of container. I don't, whether it's metal, rubber or plastic, I just want it in a container.
Single large container installed inside in the rear of the building. Well, so one of the things, we could say trash will be contained in a single large container designed and installed. Um, in the rear of the dwelling.
That works.
Period. Period. Sometimes fewer words is better. Say, installed at the rear of the dwelling, because it doesn't need to be inside. All right. I think we've got it.
I think we've got it.
We've gotten.
Questions, last chance. You good?
Yes.
I think so.
Is there any public comment? Like online?
Yeah.
Or anywhere else?
No.
Okay.
So. Then would be the proper, we have to move to accept the amended document.
So, so the next step is that you would make, if you, if you're inclined to advance this. You would, um, someone would make a motion to approve the language of the proposed text amendment. As modified to be recommended to the board, to the mayor and board of commissioners for adoption. Yeah. And that's if you're on board with it, if you're not, then you say no and it's still going to the board of commissioners.
Roll poll, is everybody okay? Basically, taking this to the board of the commissioners as we've modified it? Or do you want to make an exception and it goes to the appeals? Both options are on the table.
Make a motion, we'd do it with modifications, okay?
There's a modification to the code, so it goes to the board of commissioners.
Yes.
Okay.
Without treating it as a special exception.
Without treating it as a special exception. Okay, so I, I have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay, having a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have any nays?
I'm going to abstain, because I'll have to vote when it comes.
The board of commissioners, okay, so vote carries. Three yays, no nays and one abstention.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and nothing else here, if somebody has comments, the, the GIL, the next meeting is. September twenty fourth. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, like September twenty fourth. So unless something else comes up.
Let's see. Twenty eighth is the twenty ninth, thirtieth, isn't it?
Thirty, thirty at this next meeting, okay, I just want to get that on. Yeah, if, if you would have done anything, Bobby would have haunted me, you know that. He, he would have haunted me till end of creation. Okay, no other comments, everybody's good. Then time is eight fourteen and the Emmisburg Planning Commission meeting is now adjourned.